April 16th, the order will begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbagged, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cicero.
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Snow?
Here.
Intend a motion for the approval of the minutes of the March 26th meeting.
I'll move them.
When you're ready.
Mr. Cicero?
Abstain.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Abstain. We have one public hearing this evening and some unfinished business on former public hearings. But the format we follow for the public hearings is we give the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do in a particular location. And those wishing to speak in favor are given a like opportunity and then those wishing to speak against are also afforded an opportunity. So with that in mind, first public hearing this evening is a conditional use permit to allow recreational facility at 9010 Tyler Boulevard.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Should I begin?
Well, right ahead.
Okay, my name is Daniela Shana Mayo and I am a, I own Bar Two Pilates LLC. And I am looking to lease this space for teaching my Pilates class, small intimate classes. I have plenty of parking and just grow my business. I'm really excited to get in there and stay in Mentor.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Any comments from the administration, Kathy?
Mr. Chairman, this is pretty straightforward. No other comments other than what is stipulated in the yap report.
Okay. So commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Right ahead.
I'd like to see you put an AED device onsite.
Absolutely.
So you want to make that a condition?
Please.
Okay. No other questions, I'll intend a motion for approval.
Motion to approve with two conditions, second being AED device.
Second.
When you're ready, call the roll.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon? Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
And Mr. Varga?
Yes.
And Mr. Snow?
Yes.
And under old business, conditional use permit to allow a commercial recreation facility at 7960 Plaza Boulevard. Is that applicant ready?
I am looking, I am looking for them now. I've got a number of calling users, I just don't see them anywhere.
Okay, maybe we'll come back to it then.
Wait, I got one member here, okay, I got the property owner.
Can you speak on behalf?
What's the name of the property owner, Larry?
Um. You know, Nachi.
This is Joe Aquino Ventamillo with DFG Erie Commons. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead and state what you'd like to do at the, at the location.
We have the former Giant Eagle. We are looking to subdivide the space into two units. One unit being Urban Air. So we are requesting a change of use.
Yes.
Okay, this is Ted Granbo, I'm the franchisee for the Urban Air. Apologize, I couldn't figure out how to get myself off of mute.
Okay, I'll intend a motion to take this off the table.
Second. Motion to remove from table.
Second. Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
And Mr. Snow?
Yes.
So now we've got it off the table, so now we can officially talk about it.
All right, would you like me to, this is Ted Granbo again. I'm the franchise owner of the Urban Air in Copley, Ohio. And as a resident of Lake County, we're looking forward, my wife and I are excited to bring the concept of Urban Air Brands to Mentor. A little bit about Urban Air, as many of you have heard of this brand before. Founded in 2011, started as traditional trampoline park, similar to like a Skyline or an altitude or Get Air, some of the other locations that I think are across the Cleveland area. First franchised in 2014, there's currently 130 in the United States with another 60 under construction. In 2016, they really broke out from the pack and created this indoor adventure park concept versus a trampoline only park. And that's really what differentiates Urban Air today. Recognized as one of the fastest growing franchises, number one for birthday parties by Parent Magazine. 2020 voted number one family entertainment concept on a National or Magazine. And while still relatively young, all parks are doing well, no closures since inception. Yeah, what really makes Urban Air unique is typically the size of the space, the ceiling heights. Typically located in high-volume, family-friendly retail areas versus industrial parks. And we typically don't limit time. So we sell access to the park and then allow, allow guests to stay as long as they would like. To inspire that, we have a fast casual cafe, so we'll, we'll serve made-to-order food. It's not a sit-down restaurant, but we will serve made-to-order food to inspire guests to stay longer. About 30% of the attractions will be trampoline-based. And then in addition, we'll have rock walls, courses. We have warrior courses, something called a sky rider, which is a, like a cross between a zip line and a roller coaster that's suspended from the ceiling. And several other attractions that again are very unique. If space permits, we'd like to put indoor go-kart track into this location. We're working with the designers to make sure it fits the layout, the example layout that we provided, which show how that would work. And I've also included a bunch of detail around kind of the powers of operation, number of employees, et cetera. But let me, you know, pause there from that overview and then, you know, see what questions you all have that I can, that I can answer.
Okay, what we're dealing with here is the CUP and there are two stipulations, two conditions in the staff report. Have you read those?
Uh.
One is bicycle parking requirements.
Yeah, I believe there's conditions related to, yeah, what the landlord will need to do. So Jack, I would ask you to maybe address those.
The stipulations, one being the bicycle parking, we are aware of that.
So you'll address that, correct?
We will address the bicycle parking, correct.
And the other stipulator, the other condition is building and fire comments shall be addressed in writing as part of the building permit process.
Correct.
So you're fine with those two?
Correct.
Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
Like to add a condition for an AED device to be onsite.
That's fine, yep, we can do that.
So that'll be three conditions for the CUP. Kathy, any comments from the administration?
No, this is just a two-part approval with regard, first, the conditional use permit and separately then the architectural review.
So I'll intend a motion for the CUP.
Take a motion with two conditions?
Second. Actually, there are three conditions now.
Or three conditions, yes, the AED.
Second.
When you're ready.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Hey, item three is the architectural review reimagining of a commercial building at 7960 Plaza Boulevard. Don't sit down. So I'll intend a motion to take this off the table.
Motion to remove from table?
Second. Mr. Cicero?
Mr. Cicero? Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
So now I guess we're going to talk to the property owner at this point. Since you have four conditions in the approval process. Kathy, anything you want to add?
Uh.
Kathy?
Um, I, you know, I just wanted to point out the, some of the landscaping requirements that were consistent with the at-home review and approval. We're just asking that the property owner work with the landscape architect on our staff to establish some sort of timeline within which that they can meet some of these particular requirements of landscaping in the parking lot and in front of the building.
I'll ask the property owner, you'll agree to that, correct?
Uh, not, not, not entirely, no. Our agreement at home was to comply with the land, with the sidewalk landscaping at which we were approved to install planners. Just of recent, we would, we would agree to comply with that, with that measure. But we are not looking to add any additional islands and update the, update the parking lot at this time.
Kathy, any comments back?
Well, at one point when we spoke with the property owner, and it may not have been for the at-home proposal, but there was a plan in place to work on parking lot improvements for the entire area that you're responsible for in terms of ownership. And, and as part of those improvements, there was talk about, again, improving some of those island locations. The, the current plantings and vegetation that are in place are somewhat tired and could use some improvements over time. And I think that's why we put in the item two was to establish some sort of a reasonable timetable for compliance. We're not necessarily indicating this has to be done immediately, but that there would be a goal in place to, with all of these nice improvements in terms of the tenant spaces, that we could also make some enhancements to the parking lot.
Kathy, come back from the property owner?
Yeah, at this time, we, we, we wouldn't agree, we wouldn't agree to a timeline at all, just not, not knowing. We would, we would agree to take the existing islands, I believe that was the agreement, to take the existing islands and update the, update the landscaping within the existing islands, but not to create additional landscaping.
That's exactly what the condition says, existing islands then shall be refreshed.
And that's, and that's, we would agree to do that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman? There was a condition about altering the proposed elevation. On one side of the main entrance area, there's stack, on the right-hand side, there's a stack of three EFS panels. And on the left, there's a stack of two EFS panels. And I believe the city asked that, could you, could you make both, could they match? Could they both be three panels high? Do you do that?
Uh, we weren't, we weren't looking to do that. The only reason the one side is three panels high is due to the fact that we were, we will be raising the roof in that portion, portion of the building. So it's not, it's not an aesthetic improvement, it's actually an improvement in order to fit the attractions within the Urban Air. At this point, we, the landlord, are, are pretty much tapped out on, on this deal process. We feel that we've created a very clean aesthetic that will flow nicely with the rest of the center and at home.
Kathy, since that was generated by the city, I'm not strongly moved one way or the other about whether they do that. You feel that you would like to persist with that requirement?
We didn't carry it into the condition, we made it as a comment.
No, I understand, I'm, I'm just bringing it up to see whether we incorporate.
We don't have a strong feeling.
I don't have a strong feeling.
Hey, any other questions for the applicant? If not, I'll intend a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Okay. The, I guess it would be the north side of the building, because it's visible from the, the other center. So is that, is that going to be taken care of as well, as far as updated?
There's an elevation in the presentation here and it shows it being painted.
Okay.
Correct.
All the way to the rear.
And then my other question is, you're dividing this space into two separate spaces, is that right?
Correct.
So are we, are you actively looking to fill the, the second space? How is that going to, with redoing the front the way you are? I just, I guess, are we going to have to come back and do this again if you fill that second space?
Possibly, will be dependent on, dependent on the tenant that would fill that secondary space. But at this time, we're, and that's partially part of the reason why, while we're keeping the facade height as it is, because we would customize it per the, per the tenant's request.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll intend a motion.
Motion to approve with four conditions.
Second. Mr. Cicero? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Ready to go.
Thank you.
We look forward to having you in the city.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Item four, formal rezoning of 14 and a half acres from our four single family to RVG. Is that applicant ready? Larry, is that applicant, do you see him around?
Yeah, he's here, give me a second, I was just moving over there.
Okay.
Okay, Dave Novak is here and he is now live. Dave, can you hear us?
I can, thank you.
Okay.
Um, good evening, my name is Dave Novak from Barrington Consulting Group, the address is 9114 Tyler Boulevard. We were at the last meeting and we were tabled. Uh, well, do you need to remove this from the table? Did we do that already?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I was waiting to see if you guys were ready to move forward.
All right, yes, we are, thank you.
Okay. I'll intend a motion to take it off the table.
Motion to remove from table?
Second. Mr. Cicero? Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Dave.
All right, thank you. As I started to say, this, we were at the last meeting, we had a lengthy discussion with, with the board members and some of the residents in the area. We're back today with a revised plan. This new plan has a public right-of-way, so it's, it's more in keeping with the feel of the neighboring community. It's a, it's a full 60-foot wide right-of-way for the public road, public utilities, sidewalks on both sides. This new plan has 33 units. The pavement width, of course, is 24 feet wide, cul-de-sac radius is 100 feet. The front setback of the building envelopes is 20 feet from the right-of-way. The building envelopes from the edge of pavement is 38 feet. The allowable density here at two and a half units per acre is 36, we're proposing 33. One thing that I would comment on this plan, you can see that the shaded boxes that have the numbers in them, the, the unit numbers or subplot numbers, however you want to look at that, that's just an envelope with which a building could be built. It, it does not reflect the overall size of, of, of a unit here. We're not necessarily going to build a 40 by 100-foot building. That's just the envelope with which a building can be built. The crosshatched area, the angular crosshatching around each one of those that kind of mimic what looks like a, a traditional subplot, which it's not, that, that area is what we're calling and it's been used in other communities, especially in Marshview. When I was working with the developer at Marshview, that's a limited access area, meaning that only those unit owners can use that area. And I think that's, that's important because things that we learned over at Marshview, people could walk through other people's backyards right up against their patio and that was, was not well received. We did add the, we did relocate the pavilion over by unit number 14, that's up by the freeway. We also have the mailbox over by, at the, near the intersection of Dove Lane and Kingfish. And I'd also like to mention that, you know, the property to the north and the property to the west is already zoned RVG. And of course, to the east, southeast, that's Route 2. So I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Are there residents wishing to speak? If there are residents wishing to speak, we have copies of all the emails that were forwarded to the city. So I ask you not to be redundant, address new concerns and we'll go from there. So any, any resident that wants to comment, please identify yourself and give your address for the benefit of the clerk.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to re, I'm going to, I'm looking for, maybe I could do it this way. Krevasek, okay. Oops. Krevasek, on 5886 Mallard Court?
Steve, I'm muted.
Oh, yep, I see that now, okay. Okay, you're now unmuted, sorry about that.
Is Krevasek? Rose Krevasek?
This is Jeff Krevasek.
Oh, okay. Can you, can you, we can't hear you very well.
Now. Hold the bear with you. Can you hear me any better now?
Very, very faint.
Your problem. Is this any better?
Not really.
I mean, a little bit, but we still need you louder.
How is this?
I'm honoring somebody else. I'm back to him.
Krevasek, we're going to put you on hold and we're going to go to somebody else and then we'll get back to you.
Okay, next one we have will be Jeff Savage. Okay, Jeff Savage.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay, got it. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to speak at tonight's meeting. And after revealing the revised plans here, I still feel that's way too many houses for that 14 and a half acres. Because actually, I'm sitting in my house right now and I can look out at the property as I butt right up against it. And it's just way too many houses. 33 is still way too many because it's just like shoehorned in and it kind of gives me the feeling of a trailer park. Because I know the west here has approximately 11,000 square foot lots, right, approximate for all the houses in here. And these proposed ones are like a one-third of ours. And it just looks terrible from my point of view, from all the houses that are in here and all the residents that are in here. And one of the main concerns I have is looking at the wetlands and everything that I can look right out my window and see, what about the runoff? Because I think these houses are going to be raised higher to compensate for down by Heasley Creek. And what's that going to do to our yards and basements during the construction of the houses and during any kind of storms? Is that going to cause runoff into our basements, into our yards? That was one of my major concerns. And then another thing I happen to notice in the paperwork that came in is about the illuminating company and I'm going to quote this. Depending upon the electrical load for these facilities, there may be required system enhancements which may need customer cost participation. Does that mean all the residents in South City East or in the neighborhood of Birdie Lane and everything else are going to have to have higher electric bills because of this? My feeling is no, it shouldn't be, it should be on the developer themselves. If they're going to try to add into the power grid, which we already know is kind of shaky at best, even though the illuminating company probably won't really admit it, I feel that that's, that's definitely borne on their cost or the, or the residents that were going to buy into it. I don't want to be paying on that because most of the houses in here are all electric homes. And then that's basically what it is, that this is just not a big enough, it's not big enough to have that many houses. I look at developments in Mentor and I see that there are lesser houses in that kind of lane space. And it just, to me, like I said before, it looks like a trailer park because especially when you're facing Route 2, you knock all the trees down, you have all the sounds that are going to come rolling in here. We can hear the freeway now, but the nature, the natural part of the trees prevents the sounds from buffering right in here. You knock all those trees down, that sound's going to come roaring in. And God knows when the state, because the state's going to be out of money due to this whole pandemic. That's just what the governor was saying, that they're not going to have money to put up a sound wall. And that's basically it, I'm just against it, I just want to keep it single-family housing and keep the integrity of our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry, anyone else?
Yes, we have a few more people. I'm going to be clicking on Bill and Donna to make them, to bring them into this. And Bill and Donna, you guys are allowed, you can speak now.
Hi, thank you very much, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I know that all of you have received multiple emails from us and I thank you for considering what we shared. I do want to add one thing though, I will not be redundant in all the things that I've mentioned in the past. We too, as the previous speaker, are concerned about the number of homes in this area and we have a question. When it comes to RVG code, it's 14 and a half acres of land, of which two and a half acres, or two and a half homes per acre are allowed. If part of that land is unbillable, unbuildable, such as the flood zone between Heasley Creek and the freeway and the condos and the water management, the storm management section and the wetlands, that only leaves 10 to 11 acres of land for, to really build on. So does the RVG code state that it has to be two and a half homes per acre or is it overall the whole area? Because there's quite a few areas here that are unbuildable. Thank you very much.
Kathy, you want to address that?
Just based on the gross acreage, there's no deductions taken, not in actual calculations for RVG.
Okay, Larry, anyone else?
Yes, we have a few more people. Dawn is up next. Oh, let me unmute her, okay. Dawn?
Hi there. Thank you. Um, my name is Dawn Krueger and I reside at 5833 Mallard Court. I know that we have inundated you folks with all of our concerns. And as Donna said, we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to share these concerns, especially, you know, in these. especially, you know, in in this difficult forum. Um, I don't want to be redundant, because I know that you've read through everything, but there are definitely when we go back to the very beginning, you know, this first proposal, you know, had thirty six units, and then we went back to thirty five, and now there's thirty three. There's really just, and while I appreciate that they did, you know, this most recent proposal has designated designated city streets. Uh, we, there are still some, you know, concerns for the neighborhood, as well as, you know, folks that live around the city. Um, so the open space has been reduced from nine point nine seven acres to four point seven six acres. So we took two units away, but we cut down five more acres. Um, again, and then those open areas are gonna be, they're federally designated floodplain and a water retention area. Um, that's a pretty big deal. And the, you know, potential flooding, if they have to um potential flooding to existing residents' property when elevations are created per, you know, building guidelines and and those types of areas. You know, I believe Jeff also mentioned, you know, I I know that one of the proponents is that Sausalito is zoned RVG. Um, but in the staff report, it also states that our lots are an average size of eleven thousand square feet. So I would like to see a proposal with lots about that size. They're not quite as big as Birdie Lane. Um, they are RVG, but they are eleven thousand square feet. So if we could try to do that, they're trying to put, you know, I mean, they're a third of the size of our lots, and our lots are not massive here. Um, I want to reiterate what Jeff said, you know, I'm not sure if people are aware that there are a lot of homes back here that are all electric homes. So uh, some of the, you know, price tags on those, especially with a long cold winter like we've had, can be excessive as it is. So again, how are our systems gonna be taxed, and who is gonna pay for this? Um, you know, we've mentioned the traffic. Uh, we've mentioned the wildlife, we've mentioned the sound. Um, you know, the the list kind of goes on and on, and I I would like to read my last sentence, you know, paragraph here that Barrington Consulting representative David Novak has repeatedly mentioned that the driving force for changing the zoning and building the amount of units being proposed are for reasons of profit. The fact remains that the builder purchased a triangular, landlocked piece of property with one egress containing wetlands, a creek, a federally designated floodplain that's currently zoned R four single family residential. All of those factors are at no fault of the local residents, who are merely attempting to maintain the continuity of the surrounding accessible neighborhoods with lots no less than three times the proposed, sporting sidewalks, tree lawns, and concrete streets while maintaining the maximum amount of green space possible. And I did want to ask, are the streets going to be concrete, or are they going to be paved?
Kathy, can you answer that?
We'll have to ask the applicant.
Okay, all right. Um, and, you know, I I do want to note in the staff report, too, you know, again, we're consistently saying the areas adjacent to RVG, those areas are not accessible through Sausalito East. The only area that is accessible is Birdie Lane, which is zoned R four single family, but I noticed that that is omitted from the staff report.
Okay, thank, anything else?
No, we would just like to see, you know, a proper R four zoning plan or a plan with a lot less units with lot sizes similar to what we have here.
Okay, we understand. Thank you. Larry, next.
Okay, I'm going to bring up Mr., oh, Mr. Urbah, I believe it is. I just have to find him in my list. Okay. Mr. Tom Urbah? You can now speak. Okay, I'm going to bring up Mr. Urbah.
Yes, I can't seem to bring up, can't seem to unmute. Wait, whoa, 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 whoa.
You're good.
Okay, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I live. Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
You're good to go.
Yes, okay. I live at fifty eight seventy one Mallard Court, which is right next to parcel B, which will turn into uh, the extension of Donald.
He's gotta shut his TV off.
Turn the TV off. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. Okay. My name is Tom Urbah. I live on the southwest southeast, sorry, southeast corner of what would be Mallard Court and Dove Lane. Uh, and since I live right next to Dove Lane, one of my issues is the traffic. According to the International Traffic Engineers Traffic Impact Evaluation submitted by Mr. Kootenovak's company, this development will add three hundred and thirty three trips per day. Uh, the the development with the peak in the morning of twenty six cars per hour and thirty five trips per hour in the afternoon, reducing the earnings to thirty three would be a minimal reduction in the daily trips, but the impact on our neighborhood will be huge. Uh, in the staff report for this proposal, it is noted that the fire department disapproves. Will the police, the the police haven't weighed in yet. And the, will do the safety forces have any influence on this decision? Some of my neighbors have mentioned the noise from Route Two. Again, I guess I'm gonna, there is a big difference uh, in the noise between the winter and summer when the leaves are on the trees. With the project, with this project, there will be no trees between us and Route Two. With the homes, when the homes in Sausalito were built, were built, casement had a different attitude than builders of today. Thirty four years ago, when our house was built, several trees were left in place on our lot. The same was done with most of the other homes in the development. The builders today, including Victor, don't want trees to get in the way of productivity, slowing down building or profits. In Sausalito, you can't see the houses for the trees. In Glenbrook Estates as proposed, there will be no trees. The protected wetlands on the drawing, on the plot plan, the protected wetlands area overlaps the exclusive use area. How does that work? The staff report says the exclusive use area is for decks and patios. On lots two, three, and four, and thirty two, will they, will they be in the protected wetlands? The only open area of any size is the storm water management area. The retention pond with no drainage shown. How does the water get to Heasley Creek from that retention pond? In the current proposal, the front setback is reduced to twenty feet with no, with no tree lawn. The rear setback has been reduced to fifteen feet. That doesn't look like much of a deck or patio. The width of the building envelope has been reduced to forty feet typical. As I read the drawing, the vast majority are forty feet wide and eighty five to a hundred feet deep. I hate to repeat, but I will. That gives the appearance of a trailer park. On March twenty sixth, Mr. Novak mentioned that, of course, Glenwood Estates would not look like Sausalito because the house designs are different from forty years ago. I believe he entirely missed the point. Glenwood Estates would not look like Sausalito because Glenwood Estates, because in Glenwood, Glenbrook Estates, the sidewalks are attached to the street. There are no tree lawns with twenty foot set, with twenty foot front lawns, maximum, and there are two point three units per acre. In Sausalito, our garage doors do not occupy half the width of the building envelope, and therefore half or more of the front of the houses. There are trees, large trees, in our fifty foot front yard and in our backyards. And we can park two cars, more than two cars, and our driveway was out covering the sidewalk at any given time. And in Sausalito, there are one point seven houses per acre. So how can you compare the two? In the letter, in the letter from the illuminating company is particularly disturbing. Our house is totally electric, like Dawn was saying. It appears that being a customer of the illuminate, illuminating company, I might get to participate in the cost of supplying power to Glen Glenbrook. I was not able to contact Gene Beck to clarify. As I put together my thoughts this afternoon, I was constantly reminded that I live with wetlands by my sump pump. I was reminded by my sump pump. It kept running. I see on the staff report, FT twenty three, one of those listed items, that there are requirements for basements to be a minimum of sixteen inches above groundwater elevations. I wonder if my house is sixteen inches above groundwater elevations. I don't know. In addition to that one item, there are almost, there is almost a full page of requirements concerning storm, stormwater. It appears that engineering and building is concerned about drainage as much as my neighbors and I are. We oppose RVG for this property. The fire, the fire department agrees. And according to our petition, over four hundred and fifty of friends and neighbors in Menter agree. Please do not change the present zoning for this property. Thank you.
Okay, Larry, anyone else? Larry, anyone else?
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, calling up now Greg Pike. And, okay, Greg, you're.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
How you guys doing today?
Great.
Good.
Basically, my question is, what is the benefit to the city of changing the zoning? This neighborhood started approximately forty years ago. Birdie was added, I think it added value to basically the entire community of Menter, and this neighborhood in general had brought all of our home values up. And people have been investing here, spending anywhere from two hundred to five hundred thousand dollars for their homes. Uh, so is it fair for us to have our properties devalued when there's something already in place to continue what has already been established forty years ago, and obviously somebody intelligent did that? So what benefit does the city get for allowing this to happen?
Okay, we'll address that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Larry, anything else?
Yes, we have one more. Um, I think her name is Emily Brown. I'm going to track Emily Brown. Okay, Emily, you're up.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good, good evening. Thank you for for letting me address. I I just had a clarification question to something that started at the very beginning of this topic. When it was talking about the idea of the actual street and then having sidewalks on each side of the street, it, I I don't know if I misheard, but did it say that there was limitations to using those sidewalks and going into that part of the community? Because the way I look at it now, with how we have everything set up specifically to with with Birdie Lane and the, and the um houses, the newer homes and just from what's in Sausalito East, you know, I I have a dog currently, and I my husband and I are very active in terms of of working out and and being in this community that we kind of just go as we please. We meet a lot of people. It kind of brings in that community warmth. I just kind of wanted some clarification if there would be some restrictions with this new structure.
Okay, Dawn, I understand you have additional comments?
Okay, I, we have someone else that would like to speak first, if that's okay with the board.
That's okay. Right ahead.
Okay, um, Rick. Am I ever gonna try and pronounce his last name, and that's bad for me? Okay, Rick, you're up.
I guess what I have to say is, um, a lot of the concerns that it sounds like everybody has, reading the Barrington Consulting Group's, uh, I guess, comments back to the engineering and building department, um, a lot of the things that we're talking about looks like are gonna be submitted after final design. So I think that's what's a big concern to me. Um, because a lot of the questions aren't gonna get answered till the final design. So there's a couple of things that I can bring up are like the ones from Agua, Ohio about uh, the flow rates and the pressure. And it says, please note that the fire, uh, that the hydrant flow rates may vary depending upon water storage tank levels, consumption levels, and unusual demands. Adding these extra thirty three homes to the supply line that's gonna go back there, that is a concern. Um, that we already have low pressure problems as it is. What's gonna happen from there? Um, and another one was, I noticed it said about the tree management plan, because a lot, everyone's speaking about trees. And it says the tree management plan has not been completed at this point in the project, but the limits of tree clearings have been added to the plan clarity. Okay, because I could see the ribbons out there, and I would imagine that would be the the limits of clearing. But not having a tree management plan in place, that's a concern. Considering that everybody's worried about the trees. Um, that's, that's about all I have.
Okay, thank.
Well, I guess one more question is, once the, it gets past where we're at, if and when it does, how do we follow up with all the the concerns of the after final design questions?
Mr. Zeeman, can you answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the planning commission is duty to make a recommendation on this proposed rezoning and development plan. Uh, it may go up to city council with either a positive or a negative recommendation. Uh, either of those, nonetheless, means that it will, after the planning commission takes some action, be referred to the city council. At that point in time, another public hearing will be advertised for and conducted by the city council, and it will, again, take up its own independent review of this proposed request.
Okay, so then we would be able to, from this point, if it does carry on further than air, which it's going to, obviously, we'll be able to chime in on all that and try to find out what's going on with all the plans for the final design.
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. That's all I got. Thank you.
Is Mr. Novak still available?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, is there any opportunity to circle back with Ms. Krevasik? She was the inaudible. Public.
Yes. She is still here. I will. And Jeff Krevasik is back.
How's the audio? Not really.
You still cannot hear me.
It's very faint.
I don't know how I can unmute, just turn the volume up, but I run the volume.
Is your, are you speaking into a phone or into your computer?
Into a phone.
Own. Volume's up as high as it can go? Can you shout?
Can you hear me?
Better.
Yes.
Okay. I'll try to do this as best as possible and uh um, be damned with redundancy. I apologize. First, I would like to say that when Sausalito East Development was being built, I worked.
He's gonna have to speak louder. Can't hear.
I've, I, I'm right up to the phone. I don't know what else to do.
Well, keep going. We'll do our best, and if we can't hear you at all, we'll let you know.
Thank you. I brought my wife. I brought my wife to see this development that I'd been working on and said one day we would move here and we did move here. We, we now have lived here and had three homes in the development over the last 30 years. Uh, our last home was, uh, Mallard Court, which is. Victor contracting is what was.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to work.
No. All right, well, thank you for the time.
Okay. Mr. Novak.
Would you, um, first, would you like to hear Dawn's question?
Sure.
Okay, let me bring her back up. Okay, Dawn?
Yes, hi there. Okay, thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak again. I was a little thrown off. I didn't want to read my whole speech from earlier, but I, I did forget a couple of things. Again, we just want to thank you for, you know, listening to our concerns. Um, I applaud my neighbors, my fellow neighbors for attempting to, to get on this call, um, in creating the online petition because there are still folks that, you know, either don't have access to email or, you know, we're all pretty savvy and I've been getting some text messages from people having difficulty trying to get on this, this conversation. So, um, we would just ask really that you maybe pause this project until we all have the ability to actually get together to voice our concerns, that you can actually hear everybody's concern. Or really just, you know, come up with a plan of less homes, larger lots, tree lawns and just stuffings in, you know, for continuity. It's, it's not really that, that much of a difference, I think, um, at, you know, at the end of the day, and I think it will impact the city in a more positive manner if, if we do that. Uh, I know a lot of people, uh, may have sent some, you know, kind of frustrated emails. And it's, it's not my place to apologize for those because those aren't mine. But I think it was really just people venting their frustrations because they feel like they don't really have the ability to speak or, or have a voice or, you know, to be able to be there to present their concerns. So, um, again, thank you for listening and, um, hopefully, you know, you'll consider, you know, pausing this until the future.
Okay, I want to ask Mr. Zeeman to comment again on procedurally, we don't, the city does not necessarily want to have this rezoning occur. Property owners, maybe you can enlighten us as to how the property owners go about this.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, any, any owner of property or a contract owner of property, uh, in the city of Mentor, and this isn't endemic just to the city of Mentor, most communities, uh, can, uh, request by application to have the property rezoned. Residential to commercial, commercial to residential, whatever that, that request may be. Everyone has an opportunity and you could have a large site or you can have a very, very small parcel. That's really not outcome determinative of your, uh, ability to make that request. And so the planning commission, uh, upon receipt of a, of a complete application, uh, is required to conduct this public hearing and to consider the merits of the request. It's, uh, it's guided by the, the purpose and intents, uh, expressed in the comprehensive plan in the zoning code and, uh, and in other adopted policies of the city and, uh, and ultimately what is good planning practice. So again, that's, um, that is the process. Uh, it, uh, it commences with the planning commission and, and ultimately again, whether the recommendation is positive or negative, uh, relative to this request, it does then go to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Zeeman. Mr. Novak, are you still there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. We have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I, I have a couple of questions. One is, we, we talked about going from 36 to 33 lots. Is it possible to go to less than 33? I guess anything's possible.
Anything's possible, but again, where it becomes a cost of economics.
Well, maybe this isn't the best, maybe this isn't the best one for economic benefit. The site.
Well, I, I, you know, my, my client feels it is, but again, it is, it's, it's conditioned on the number of, of home sites that you have. And if you look at the, um, the R4 plan that we put together, I believe it's, um, the, you know, there's nine lots that we had proposed. And when you look at the construction costs and so forth, that based on the street length and so forth, um, we had estimated that the cost was going to be $82,000 per lot. That's just the construction cost. That does not include, um, the land cost. That does not include profit because this is, we are, we do plan to make, hopefully make a profit here. Um, so as you continue to reduce the number of lots, the cost per lot goes up. And on this new plan, because this is, these are public roads and there's, there's more things that we have to do as far as sidewalks and, and, and infrastructure and so forth, that has to meet the public road standard. These costs continue to go up. So as the costs go up, you cut the number of units, it, it's, it's not feasible. And I, I guess I would question, I, I realize that these neighbors don't like the fact that, that this development is happening. I, I believe that they should have all known it when they purchased their house, that there was this 14 acre piece back here that at some point would be developed. Okay? So.
I suspect that that, at that time, the thought was it's R4 zoned, so maybe that's the development that'll go in.
You know, Mr. Snow, I, 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 I don't know what, what happened back in the 19, early 1970s. Probably if, uh, my guess would be is, is that this piece of property, uh, this 14 acre piece of property was probably not owned by the, the original developer. So when he came, when that developer came to the city, he just asked the city to, to rezone his property. Um, again, when you do rezoning, you really don't want to have pocket zoning. And in this case, because everything around this property, all the abutting property is already RVG. This property should be RVG just because of the nature of the surrounding property.
How, how do you answer the question of where the people brought up the fact that some of these lots are 11,000 feet and you have a minimal lot size?
Well, again, one of the things that, that I think people are missing here is that these are not lots, so to speak, in the convention, they're not lots like, um, in Sausalito or over in, on, uh, Birdie Lane. These are what we call envelope lots. So again, you can, and I know Mr. Zeeman has some other terminology that he likes to call these building envelopes, but that's what they are. These are building envelopes with which, um, the, the, uh, the house can be built. The limited access area, we could surely take that off of there and then you would just see all these blocks. But we learned from Marshview that you need to restrict these areas somewhat so people cannot just sit up, technically somebody could sit on somebody else's patio or, or something like that. And so we've learned that from Marshview and that's why we included the limited access area here. So these are not true lots and it's difficult, it's very difficult to compare the lot sizes here versus the lot sizes in Sausalito. You know, if you look at the, the, the minimum required distance in Sausalito, it's 10 feet to the side yard, which would mean a minimum of 20 feet to the, um, between houses. We're at 19 and a half, or 19 feet. So very, very similar. Um, in, in Sausalito, the, when I read the staff report, it said that the rear setback was not mentioned, so it was interpreted to be zero. Were much greater than zero on all of these, plus we had, especially on the north side, where those two cul-de-sacs abut our north property line, um, there was some, it was about eight and a half feet. That buffer. 63 foot buffer along the northern property line. So again, we've, and the, and in those, in that area, the trees will remain. So those people that are concerned about coming in and clear cutting all the trees and so forth, that's not our intent.
Okay, commission members, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I have a series of questions. You can jump in to the, to answer them as I, as I go through this.
Okay.
And some of this is just for clarification. I've been hearing tonight that about sidewalks that are integral with the curb of the street. When I look at your plan here, it looks to me as though the sidewalks are at the edge of the 60 foot right of way. And there's a space between the sidewalk and the street. Which, which is it?
You, you are correct. This, the sidewalks, this is a normal public street in the city of Mentor. So you have a 24, you have a 60 foot right of way. You have a 24 foot pavement width. And then you have a five foot sidewalk, which is abuts this, the, the right of way line. Typically, there's one foot between the right of way line and the edge of the sidewalk.
Right.
So there, this will have normal trees planted along in the tree lawn, very similar.
Tree lawns, right. That, that's the clarification I want because I'd heard in some of the questions or some of the impressions that there was, that the sidewalks were integral with the curb and there was no tree lawn, tree lawn.
Right, our previous plan had the sidewalk right against the, the one side of the street.
So that's, that's one question. Uh, another question I have is, um, you have these open space areas, which I can appreciate that you've made them larger, like, uh, open space A and B and C. When I look at, like, for instance, let's take A. Um, how, that's commonly owned. It would be under the jurisdiction of the homeowners association, correct?
Yes.
And they would have to maintain that space?
Yes.
How do you maintain, how do you get maintenance to that space? It looks to me to be completely landlocked. Uh, as, as would be, uh, space B. How would, how would you maintain that?
Well, a-again, what, what I think that you're missing here is that these limited access areas for each individual unit, okay, restricts the common use, so to speak, meaning that the, an adjacent neighbor or whatever couldn't go and walk on that, that limited access area. But the homeowners association would have the right to come in and cross any of those limited access areas and the open space. Maintain those areas.
Okay, so that, that's, I'm, I'm not sure. I personally like that, but that's how you do it. So that's an answer to my question. Let me, let me ask another or make a suggestion more than a question. These open space areas, and you, you kind of alluded to this, that the open space A and B and C, you're not going to clear cut those areas? You're going to, you're going to leave them the way they are and only develop the, the, uh, the adjacent areas to the house, houses themselves?
First of all, we will not clear cut those areas. Will, I would imagine, first of all, we would probably try to go in and clean those areas up if there's trees that are fallen and, and so forth. There may be. For maintenance. The, one of the other comments that I heard throughout the, this meeting is people are concerned about drainage and things like that. So we may have to put a drain or two in those areas to make sure that those, that those areas drain and are picked up and taken into the, um, detention basin and then outlet it into the creek?
It's, but the impression, and I, I'm trying to get an impression both from my own understanding and for the public, that that 50 foot, what is it, 50 foot, no, 60?
63, I believe.
63 foot space is going to be left substantially intact.
Yes.
And so the concern that the homeowners from the adjacent subdivision would not have a significant change in their, the appearance from their backyards.
I would agree with that.
I'm, 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 I'm kind of establishing that as, as a condition almost, but that's our understanding.
Yes.
The only other thing I have to ask about is the use of, the, the available, availability of the use of this open space B. Um, I, I appreciate now that the, uh, that there's a pavilion with some parking spaces that's readily accessible to everybody. It's adjacent to a sidewalk. People can drive there. It's not in somebody's backyard. Uh, I'm going to request again, is there the ability for people who are in that area that they can get, physically get to this open space B because right now it's inaccessible? So is there, you know, I, I, we, we discussed something like this with another subdivision, another location, but basically what it amounted to was a pathway and a bridge, you know, to go across the creek stream so that people can actually get to the space that they're paying to maintain on a monthly basis.
We could surely, um, take under advisement to put a path. Um, again, if you, I, I, you know, people, residents within this development would have the, would have the right to walk through those open spaces.
If they can.
At the last meeting, um, I had mentioned, you know, some type of a footbridge or something like that. And Mr. Haddon had, I don't exactly remember what his comment was, but he didn't feel that that was necessarily a good idea.
Yeah, Dave, my comment was you're building a, a bridge over a flood plain that, you know, could be washed away in a flood, obviously.
Right, no, and George, I don't disagree. I'm just trying to say.
I hate to have someone get stranded on zone B, you know, or open space B and they can't get over a creek when a, you know, storm comes through.
Well, I would hope they can come down the other side of the creek when there's a storm, but.
And, and my concern is that they'll never be able to get to the other side of the creek if there's not somewhere to go. Even though they're paying to maintain that property for the life of their, their mortgage.
Again, looking at the slope on either side of that creek, it really doesn't look like it's a, it's a slope that you couldn't traverse relatively easy.
Well, well, let, can I, can I leave it like this, that if we make a condition that you need to be able to get a pedestrian from one side to the other? You can figure out how to do it, but it'll be a condition.
As long as we can, I, I don't have a problem with that condition as long as we don't adversely, or, or that we don't, we don't impact the flood zone or there's some governmental restriction that will not allow us to do that.
Pathway that, that does flood when, when the water is high. Doesn't have to be every hour of every day of every year, but.
Right, if we could come up with something that we could actually put a, you know, I'm going to say a concrete. I'm not sure that's really what we would want to do, but maybe even a, a stone path that could actually go down into the creek and come back up the other side.
Right.
That in a, in a rain event, it would be covered with water and then when the rain subsides, path would be there to walk across.
All right, that's, that's, that could be a, an acceptable condition. Uh, one last thing, and, and I, and I, I think you just need to talk about this more. There's a number, there's at least three situations where the, where the, um, uh, the lots themselves are compromised by the wetlands. I mean, you still show it as a lot, but you're, you're already pulling the, the footprint, the possible building envelope back uh, from these locations. That, that just seems really problematic to me.
Right, but again, what you, and, and I, I can appreciate when you look at it on the plan, why there might be some confusion, okay? First of all, the wetlands, all the wetlands on this development are going to be protected, okay? They're going to be during construction, they'll be fenced off and so forth and they, you know, whether we put signs up or something, but the only person, only purpose of the area that you're calling a lot, which is not really a lot, it's a restricted area.
Personal use area.
All we're doing is stopping somebody standing in that restriction, restricted. All we're doing is stopping somebody standing in that restriction, restricted area behind units two, three, four.
Thirty-one, thirty-two, nineteen, twenty.
So, it's just to re, so again, in, in the middle of the summer, somebody could probably walk through that wetland and not get their feet muddy. But, so again, we don't want, we're trying to say, you, you can't walk, you have to stay back behind that imaginary line as, as a, as a resident of in, in this development. So we're just restricting the area, we're not using, we're not taking away the wetland, we're not doing any of that. We just don't want anybody walking directly behind these houses.
Except the people who live in those houses?
Yes, yes.
Would have the right to do things in that, in that wetlands.
They, they would have the right to walk in it, but they cannot build anything in it. Within the culminants, we will put restrictions that the wetlands must remain, and, um, a unit owner within this development cannot disturb, change, modify, I don't know all what the right terms would be, but those wetlands will stay as they are.
Does the city have a question about that? Any, any concern? Because to me, that seems very problematic about the use of that. You know, one, at one hand, it's a personal use area for the, for the property, on the other hand, it's restricted because it's a wetland, and I can, you can clearly see they overlap. I mean, is this going to be a, uh, legal condition, a, a, a problem?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if anyone from the city...
Yes, Mr. Varga, let's, uh, take a look at this, um, in terms of what, who owns what. Everything that's dark shaded, um, except for the street, of course, would be owned by the individual homeowner. Everything that's not dark shaded, regardless of whether there's striping on it, or hash marks, or what have you, would be owned by the association. So the association would, uh, would own all of the areas, um, with, which currently are, are their jurisdictional wetlands. So, with, with that, um, the association exercises complete control over any impacts to those wetlands, uh, as they must. And, um, I think to Mr. Novak's point, you can't put a structure anywhere outside of the, the shaded area. That's where, that's where a house or, or any permanent improvements have to, have to go. Excepting for, of course, access drives, things of that nature, patios, maybe a deck. But, um, to your point, just a slightly deeper dive then, um, you couldn't, the patio, pool, um, a deck or anything that would impact those wetlands, obviously without proper mitigation and permits.
Okay, so that, so the, the oversight is going to be from the home owners?
Correct.
Primarily.
And, and ultimately, the approved, uh, again, it would be an approved development plan, um, the city could have enforcement authority, um, or, or other governmental entities with jurisdiction, uh, should there be any improper impacts to, to any wetlands or riparian corridors.
Mr. O'Malley. Mr. Cook?
Yeah, I want to reiterate what Mr. Varga said about between lots one, behind lots one through thirteen, that that open space, that is going to border the Sausalito, that is primarily going to be untouched. So you are going to put some storm drains in there possibly? Is that what I was hearing?
My, my first thought would be is no, we're not going to put storm drains in there. But since we have not completed, we have not completed the formal design of this development, okay, which we wouldn't do until we know that the property has been rezoned. But once the property is rezoned, then we will do the, the actual formal design showing where the storm sewers are going to go, the water lines, all that storm sanitary sewers and all those things. That being said, if... I ju, I don't, I, I don't want to sit here and say to you, we will not go in there at all. Our intention would not to be, not to go in there at all. But if we need to put a drain somewhere because some of the water from this site is now draining, it would be draining onto Sausalito's property, we would want to stop that. And we need to stop that water. So, there could be, I don't foresee it, but there could be. Because what I would envision, along the, the northern, or the, the southern line of the open space A, within the restricted area, we would probably run a storm sewer through there. Because again, one of the requirements in the staff report from engineering is that every, I think it says lot, but every unit would have access to a rear yard drain. So, we would do that, have access to a rear yard drain, other than units that back up directly to the, to the stormwater pond, because those could just outlet directly into the pond.
Okay. And then, uh, one more thing is, a, a lot of the complaints were highway noise. So I'd like to see you come up with some sort of mounding along Route Two on your property, with some pine trees, or some sort of, something to knock the sound down. Do you have some intention to do that, so that these people don't have a clear view of Route Two?
Well, first of all, I think everybody is talking about this clear view, realizing that along the north property line, we're not going to take those trees down. In that area, in the open space C, um, other than where the detention basin is, our intention would be to try to leave as many of those trees in that area as we could.
I'm talking about a long route.
No, I understand, I understand. Then also, there's going to be houses in the way. My, we could put, we could try to put some mounding along that strip, there's a fifteen foot strip there, a long route too. My only concern about that is, we don't know exactly how CEI and the phone company and so forth are going to run their utilities, their underground utilities. So that's why we have a fifteen foot strip there, so that if necessary, I don't know, they may come up and just go on the western, northwesterly side of Kingfish, and run their li, their, their lines over on that side and not go along the freeway. But if they need to run their lines across along the freeway, I can't be putting pine trees and, um, mounting and so forth along there. We could possibly erect some type of a fence, but it's surely not going to be like the wall that, that is along, um, Route Two.
Hmm. That's all I got.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkovic.
Um, Dave, I have two questions for you.
Yes.
One is the, uh, a couple of the residents, as well as myself, uh, commented on the tree management plan, uh, that is not in place right now. Um, I know you're still sort of trying to flesh out this, this street layout and so forth, but wouldn't, um, certain trees that are per the city standard, um, that would be, remain, wouldn't that possibly affect any home placement, street layout? I guess if you can address that. Um, and then, one of the other things that I, while I appreciate your new street layout, uh, that kind of mimics the public, um, layout with this typical sidewalks, which I think everyone's going to benefit from, um, I still see the RVG component from Mentor's standpoint, lacking where we sort of have this central space, and I know we have open space C, but it almost seems to me that units twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, if those were missing, for example, and that became a large green space, I mean, that is almost what we really look for in our RVG. But that component, in my estimation, is really sorely lacking.
Um, well, I'll try to answer your second question first. I, again, you know, it's a difference of opinion, but, you know, we do have the open space C, we have access both for maintenance and, um, enjoyment. We could surely put a walking path around the pond to allow the residents that enjoyment of being able to walk around the pond and so forth. I've stayed away from that a little bit, because I've heard comments on other RVG, um, proposals where the commission frowns upon somebody walking in somebody's backyard. I think this, this, this layout with the limited access areas, while people would still be walking in their backyards, it pushes them farther away from the potential units. So we could surely put a walking trail around the, the pond. Uh, a-again, just so everybody understands, the pond that we show here is not designed. We, you know, we've done some rough calculations, we feel that it should be adequate to meet the needs of, of the city of Mentor requirements. But because the final design, I mean, we keep moving roads and so forth, um, hasn't been formalized, it's difficult for us to really determine the, the size of the pond. As far as the, the tree preservation plan, again, because everything has been so dynamic with this project, um, for us to go in and, we would have to go on the entire fourteen acres and locate every tree that's five inches or, or larger, that would be a monumental undertaking. So our, again, our intention is, in the areas of open space, especially open space A will remain treed as it is today. Open space C will remain partially wooded, especially where any of the wetlands are, those trees are going to remain on the entire site. If we can provide more, leave some of the trees behind units twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, uh, thirty-three, we would surely want to do that. We're, we don't hate trees, and again, I think that the trees would be a benefit to this property. And then on open space B, the triangle on the south side of the creek there definitely will be untouched. So all those trees would remain. And even by the pavilion, you can see where the wetland is. So I would envision all those trees in that corner, except for where the pavilion is or unit fifteen is, all those trees would remain there.
Okay, I just, uh, thank, thank you for that. Um, I just still think that, from a residential standpoint, you know, we just, we really don't have a centralized, large amenity, if you will. I, I know you're having the open spaces and so forth as a buffer, visual buffer, and you can access those, but it doesn't really seem very user friendly. So, that's my point, thank you.
Other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
And?
Uh, Mr. Novak, I, I know in the last meeting, we talked about the, uh, the wetland delineation. Have you heard back from the Army Corps yet? Is this actually where all the wetlands are at, or haven't you heard back yet?
I believe we have. I, um, I'm, I, I mean, I know that we did the, the wetland report, everything was submitted. I do not, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we've had any confirmation, or whether the wetland delineation has been affirmed by the Corps. But again, our intention is to not disturb any of those wetlands.
Right, but, I mean, it could come back where there's more wetlands than what you're showing here, or less, but typically, it could be more, correct?
That could be, yes.
And then, uh, is a, is a developer proposal about basements in these homes, or slabs?
Our initial intention would be to put basements, but again, depending on, um, the water table, that would have to be decided. But I, and I just got a, uh, text from the owner, and he told, he's telling me that the, that the wetlands have been confirmed there on site.
Okay. So with the basements, we're, we're assuming some pumps, you know, based on what we've heard from all these homeowners, adjoining homeowners, um, and then the yard drains you have to install for every, every unit, you're calling them. Are you going to tie your downspout, or not your downspout, your sump pumps into these yard drains then, to help drain the water table in the area?
They would either be into the yard drains, or directly into the stormwater management pond.
And then you mentioned, uh, in, in open space A, a possible storm sewer system, raining probably down to go through four or five across to the pond somehow. Uh, why can't we keep that inside the, uh, uh, exclusive area and not go in open space?
No, it would be, that would be my intention, that it would be, say, five feet or ten feet inside the exclusive use area.
Okay, and, and, in the, in the past, when I've developed, or, you know, the county engineer's office, typically when a, when a new subdivision goes in, it kind of helps with draining the surrounding area. I'm assuming this, the topo goes from north toward Route Two, correct, toward the creek?
Yes, it's very, very flat.
Yeah, looks, yeah, I saw that.
There's like about two or three feet of fall from the north to the creek?
So there's no water coming off these houses going toward the north or toward the west?
Correct.
You're, you're going to have yard drains collecting all that?
Correct.
All right. And my last question on the floodplain, uh, you also have that conservation protected zone over there, uh, but do you know what the base flood elevation is for that stream? I think it's an AE, so you should have that elevation.
I don't know, but I know that we overlaid the, I mean, the flood zone that's shown on there, the, you can see along the, uh, western property line where that kind of, that little finger jets out, that, that is the area that's actually the floodplain, you can see it runs, um, again, it'd be in the open space B, it runs up along Route Two and so forth. But we, we have not compared that elevation, we have not done a physical topo through there to determine what the actual elevation, what the limits of that flood zone would be.
And then, if, if, I mean, there's a lot of stipulations from the city man regarding stormwater and whatnot, um, that still need to be met for just to move forward. Open space B could possibly be a, a basin to help with the, the water elevations or stormwater management?
Right, but how would we get the water from our development across the creek?
Well, I'm just thinking of maybe providing more storage, um, you know, for the base flood, uh, flood.
Well, I'm not going to say we would not do that, but if we do that, we're moving probably the majority of the trees within open space B, and I'm not sure how the commission and/or the residents would, um, welcome that.
Yeah, I understand. Uh, I, I guess my point is, there's a lot of stipulations that still be, need to be met, and this all could change dramatically once you get into final design.
It, it could, yes. But, again, all these stipulations that you see basically from engineering comments, any development that we've ever done in the city of Mentor, there's usually a page and a half of, of things that are standard boilerplate comments that the engineering department makes for any development.
I understand. All right, thanks, Dave.
You're welcome.
Mr. Varga.
I just have one other question. You mentioned that, that it would be your intention to have basements in these, these houses?
Yes.
How would you, what would your developmental approach be to all the excavation of the basement, all the soil? Where would that go? Are you going to truck it offsite? Or are you going to build up the, the... Are you going to truck it offsite or are you going to build up the, the building site?
Again, until the, the final engineering would be completed, I, I can't truly answer that. But when we do these developments, what we typically try to achieve is a balanced site. So we could raise the houses six inches or something to allow us to, um, keep all the dirt on site. We don't want to, we, we would rather not bring a, an ounce of dirt in or take an ounce of dirt off. So we, we.
Well, my, my concern is that there's some peripheral.
Typically, most developers want.
And if you, if you excavate all these basements, you have a lot of soil and so it's going to, you're going to build up some elevation and you may aggravate the, the drainage situation or, you know, especially offsite because your site is going to be raised with this, you know, to mitigate the fill that you have. I'm ju, I'm just concerned about making situations worse around, you know, to the adjacent neighborhoods.
Well, I don't believe the city of Mentor's engineering code would allow us to do that. But in that.
I'm asking, is it your intention to truck that excavated soil for basements offsite?
I would say, I, I don't know for sure, but I would say no. I think that we could distribute it throughout the site and still main, maintain the drainage on our site so that it does not leave the site. Um, you know, so we contain our water on our site, go through the detention basin and outlet it into, um, Haisley Creek.
Thank you. Dave, uh, in the fire department's comments, they talk about cul-de-sac exceeding the 600 foot permitted use. How do you address all that? On ingress and egress?
Well, again, at the last meeting, it was brought up by Mr. Varga. He had a concern that, um, this piece of property out to Lake Shore, and I know it's calculated somewhere in the staff report, uh, like 3,000 feet, something like that. Now to Meister, it was 4,000 feet. Um, and this, this is, this is a landlocked piece of property. There's, it, it's limited to, we only have one access point. Um, and you know, cause the cul-de-sac length of Kingfish, that's 57 feet. So it's, is it longer than the allowed 600? Yes. But again, that's, you know, in the staff report, it's my understanding that you have the ability to waive that requirement.
Yeah, but we could waive it if we had a second access point. At least that's my opinion. Kathy?
I just, from the administration standpoint, we did talk about this and I know that there's been some questions raised by some of the attendees tonight. Uh, just to clarify, the fire department comments were that the cul-de-sac exceeds 600 feet and only one means of access. And the administration recognizes that there is only one means of access to this site. And therefore we are comfortable with waiving that cul-de-sac, that cul-de-sac length. And again, I'm only stating that because there's been questions on what the fire department stated.
Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
And then the alternative, it, it may be obvious to everybody, is you build a 600 foot cul-de-sac and you put houses on that and that's as far as you go.
Mr. Chairman, that was one of my questions is who determines if that gets waived or not? The board members or is it the administration? Okay. Is there like a formal request for that to happen or is that just determined?
One of the conditions was, it was stated in there and if you don't agree with it, you.
Mr. Zeeman, would you explain again where this goes from us? Positive or negative recommendation?
Positive or negative, it, it is then sent to city council.
Kathy?
I just have one more comment. I received an email, uh, while in the meeting and, um, a resident was frustrated because they didn't know how to work the WebEx. Um, this particular resident has also submitted written comments and I know there was another comment made, uh, I believe it was by Don Krieger, that wanting to the ability to speak. And I just want to assure everybody that a written correspondence is as good and is equivalent to somebody speaking in a public. Those written correspondences are taken into consideration and are into, entered into.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want a clarification from Dave real quick on, uh, because some of the neighbors brought up the letter he submitted from the illuminating company and the, uh, customer cost participation. Can you explain what that means, Dave, so they understand?
Yes. Um, what that means is that the residents of Sausalito would not have to, would not have to participate in any infrastructure that may be required to service this development. CI is saying we surely can have the power and so forth, but, and I'm going to exaggerate here, let's assume we had to put a new feeder line all the way from Lake Shore. Okay. Within the right of way, we'd have to come down or within the, in the utilities meant we would have to put in a, a new feeder line for some reason. The, the developer may have to participate in that, but there would be no cost to the residents of Sausalito or Birdie Lane or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And I would like to say one other thing about that cul-de-sac length. One of the things again that we're trying to do here is we are trying to preserve all the wetlands. It would have been, we probably could have had a shorter cul-de-sac length if we would have run, installed a street parallel to Mallard Lane. Um, but we would have had to go through, through the wetlands. And if we did, so that's, that's why the, the street length is longer than it desired.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. I have a question.
Go ahead.
And I don't know if this is for the city or Mr. Zeeman. If we approve the, uh, the R V G zoning, are we approving the site plan also?
Yes. Any R V G rezoning, uh, is required to have as a integral component, an approved, uh, development plan. So the, the recommendation of the commission tonight really has two equal, uh, interrelated components. One, obviously whether or not it's in accordance with good planning, uh, for this to be rezoned R V G. Um, but the answer to that question doesn't necessarily answer the second question, which is whether or not, uh, this is, uh, an R V G plan, uh, which complies with the purpose and intents of the R V G district or, or perhaps has some other deficiencies, cul-de-sac length of, you know, being one example, which is right up here tonight.
Then I'd like to make a recommendation to Mr. Novak. Um, I, I personally do not like lots 12, 13. I think that causes, I don't like how they're pinned in and I think it causes a lot of issues as you just come down Dove Lane. I think you'd have a little more room. You eliminated those two. And then also as you're coming around Dove Lane and Kingfish on that curve, it would be, I think it would be much better if between 23, 24, 25 and 26, we eliminated one or two of those and almost made that turn a not as great of a 90 degree angle. I just think it gets too tight there. I don't think removing four lots would affect your land price too significantly. You'd go from 33 to 29, might add a few thousand dollars per lot. Um, I understand if it's R four, but I think there's a path at R V G with less, maybe four less plots here.
Mr. Novak, comment on that?
Well, as the plan sits right now, um, we're roughly at $33,000 per lot of improvement costs. If, if we lose, um, four lots and we go down to 29, the, you're more like $5,000 more per lot. And it, it, it becomes a, a function of cost and, and, um, I could tell you, my, my client argued and fought with me going from 36 to 33. And like I said, when we were, when we didn't have the public streets, um, the, the improvement cost was less per foot of road. But now we're making these public streets, the, you know, the, the cost of that, of that roadway typically a, an improved road, public street, somewhere between 600 to 700 dollars a foot, fully improved.
Yeah. I, I get, I get all of that. I, I understand the cost. Um, but you're, you're making an investment here. I think, I just think the 33 houses is too many. I think there's a R V G path here, but if we're also improving the site plan, I think it, you know, four of these plots need to go.
Again, I, I can appreciate your thoughts, but I know that my client and I agree with your assessment.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the commission?
This may not be everyone's cup of tea, but there's been enough questions, I think, about the, about the overall plan, integrity of it relative to our view. Um, but is there a feeling to table it and look for an, an, an additional response? I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
Um, Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question before you take a roll?
Sure.
Um, it, it sounds like you guys are going to table this and, and, and that, you know, that's, that's, that's up to the commission, but, um, I, I guess before this gets tabled or whatever, I'm looking for some clear direction and, and just lopping four lots off, again, I, I think it really impacts the, the viability of this project. So I'm, I would, I would really look for some true direction from the commission, um, to get this plan to move forward.
I think Mr. Cicero gave you a direction.
Yeah. And it's one commissioner's opinion, but as I look at this and, you know, and I guess I'm a little, I don't like your answer because your answer to me is saying, I can't make money unless I have these four extra plots. I don't believe that. I think there's a path to do this with a few less homes here with getting an R V G rezoning. But like I said, if we're approving both, I have trouble with that.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to table. That takes precedent.
Call the roll.
Call the roll, please. Uh, Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
And Mr. Snow?
Yes.
And just to add some, a little more additional information to the applicant, I mean, I think some of the issues we're talking about is the density in some places, length of the cul-de-sac, management of the wetlands, all these issues and, and the usefulness of the common areas to the, to the owners of the subdivision. I think these are areas that we all have issues with. So I think what, whatever you have to do, you would want to address those things would be my input to the conversation.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Item five, informal rezoning of 1.11 acres from O V G, Old Village zoning to B2. Is that applicant available?
Yes, he is. I'm making them available right now. Give me one.
Take a motion and take it off the table.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Hey, go right ahead.
Good evening. This is Bruce Rinker. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, just by introduction, I'm land use counsel. My firm, Mansor Gavin, we're at Lakeside Avenue in Cleveland at suite 1400. Uh, I also believe that, uh, on deck tonight, the managing member, Derek Hanson, who really can give you a lot more insight into the overall business model and functionality. And then in case there are some questions, our architect, Joe Myers, is also on hand. And if I may, things one, we want to thank you for tabling from the last meeting so everyone can appreciate, uh, the virus has, uh, got a lot of, uh, procedural and functionality. So having the opportunity to speak tonight, um, is strictly because we've been trying to get your feedback and get a sense of direction on the overall site plan development. From a zoning standpoint, um, I, I'm going to suggest there's sort of three aspects in the general, uh, scheme of things to consider. That is the use of the property, uh, based on history, on context, where it's located. I would suggest that if you consider that there's sort of an intuitive approach to this that intersects with the specific code requirements that underlies, uh, the need for the rezoning. The procedural aspect as well, uh, I think as you're all aware, the O V district use is unique and it carries with it, um, procedures that require referendum voting. We believe that this approach administratively is not only frankly simpler for the applicant, uh, we can move forward more correctly. I'm going to suggest that in, in the long run, it provides the city with sufficient controls equal to, if not superior, uh, to the referendum process. We think it can be a more, uh, efficient way of getting at, meeting the conditions and the safeguards that, that officials would want. So I'll circle back to that in a minute. And then finally, from a design standpoint, uh, you differ with this opinion, but the takeaway that, that we have from the O V district, apart from the mixture of uses, is that it really looks to preserve certain characteristics and consistent with the comprehensive plan, uh, the design guidelines of compatibility with adjacent areas, uh, in achieving a certain look are, are paramount. Um, this is early in the game and we think that last point, especially from a design standpoint, is, uh, one, assuming that you ultimately accept the use of the site for what's proposed. We think from a design standpoint, we can satisfy a lot of those goals, uh, that are consistent with the O V district, even though we're seeking rezoning to be two. So coming back to this kind of intuitive approach, Derek Hanson has been in the business a long time and some time ago included that the delivery of service for assisted living, rather than an institutional approach, a more familial approach works a lot better. And his track record has demonstrated that. He has two facilities now, one in Gates Mills, uh, and then the second, the more recent one is in Mayfield Heights, in Mayfield Heights at the corner of Cedar and Lander Roads. The one in Gates Mills, uh, is on Psalm Center Road. And a common denominator with those two sites and this site is that it is adjacent to, uh, a Main Thoroughfare access here is not going to be directly off of center, but there is, um, a relationship that's more transitional for this type of use with the surrounding uses. Derek found this site both for the size and for the location, uh, in the context within the community and he can explain it better than I, but I think he can tell you. And he can explain better than I, but I think he can tell you that for him, this is a very, very functional site. It's kind of in a sweet spot from that standpoint. I'm not sure if you've gotten any updated. It looks like the site plan you got, we provided more recently. Initially, the plan that we had was just using the footprint from the property in Mayfield Heights. This is different because we understand that in its location, having a two-story, having that facade that that frontage requires a taller structure than what we had started with. Both the Mayfield Heights and the Gates Mills locations are single-story. They feature, I think, around 18 rooms, beds in each of them. These are licensed under state code for residential care facilities for assisted living. Here, the intent at least is to show in this initial elevation and floor plan would be to go up to two stories and using materials, design styles. We put this one upfront suggestion. But again, from a feedback standpoint, we want to see how to achieve compatibility as far as setback for all those site design features. Roughly speaking, this is a $3 million project. The building would be in all just under 8,000 square feet. The maximum number of beds, and I Derek can speak to this a little bit better, would be in the vicinity of 25 to 28 beds, I think, maximum. And a lot of that is going to, I think, turn on what seems to make the most sense for the functionality within the site. The staff report has pointed out that this is a departure from the OV district. And we're not going to dispute that. Previous discussions, we were looking at trying to fit with the OV, which would be a conditional use. B2, it is a permitted use. I'm going to suggest that from the standpoint of conditions and in terms of any impacts that typically your code would contemplate for a conditional use permit. This is a low-impact use. In many respects, it would be appropriate under the OV from that standpoint alone. You look at the staff report for context. Properties to the north, it's an R2 single-family and B2 mix. Again, that reflects the OV mixture. To the east across the street, as you all are very aware, Center Street, virtually all of that frontage is B2. This used to be B2, and then it was joined into the OV. To the south is B2, and of course, to the west is the OV use. This is a transitional use that we think works. And it's only speculative. We have tried to find out more feedback from the seller. And I confess, we don't have that answer, but we know that one of the kind of typical curious question is why not the townhomes? Our standing is that both from a referendum approval standpoint historically, and I'm sure the commission members would speak to it directly, having the townhome looked very appealing in the overall mix of things. But for whatever reason, that has not worked. It hasn't fit. I would suggest that one of the problems may be, one of density may have been one where the kind of use that the townhome use, which looks good, may not in terms of marketplace be as palatable as one might hope. This is a use that serves the community well. It's a very good transitional use in that it is, in many ways, functional as residential, but from a design standpoint, and because it is a group home format, is something variation, if you will, on the single-family use. When you look at the frontage along center, design and functionality standpoint, we think that it can fit in very much contextually. So the suggestion is that B2, from a planning and zoning standpoint objectively, apart from the OV history, but the B2 makes a lot of sense, and this is the kind of use that fits not simply as a permitted use by code, but we think functionally adjacent to the OV parcel. Building design, parking, landscaping and screening, lighting, a lot of the points that were pointed out. And there's some, what, 13 additions, I think, that are set forth in the staff report. I'd suggest to you that all of those would be met. There's one concern that if you rezone, and then this project, as its predecessors, doesn't materialize. This is more a question for your legal counsel, but we would be prepared to accept as a condition, one option might be a development agreement. Another mechanism is to put a sunset provision that if the project doesn't materialize, you can have a reverter in that the I think this would be something the planning commission could recommend, council could adopt. We would accept that if it didn't materialize, it would revert to the OV. So at the end of the day, the risk of rezoning is at least minimized in terms of that sense of permanence, that this would be much as the OV would save the referendum approach. This would be one where the site plan, your final development plans, which your code requires essentially anyway, all of those things are baked into whatever recommendation you could make and council would ultimately approve. I'm going to stop now. I think the final point that I would like to make is that from federal, state, and frankly, local policy for fair housing, this kind of use is something that the courts look to communities to be more flexible in accepting. So I think from a zoning context, from a planning standpoint, from a legal standpoint, there are a lot of positives with this. We look to having that opportunity to work with you. I want Derek now, if he can speak to giving you, I think, a lot more sort of the flesh on the bones of this. And then after that, we we hope we can answer questions and and move this in a direction that that works for us all. So thank you very much.
Derek, are you there?
Larry, is Derek there?
Yes, he is, and he's unmuted. Hey, Derek.
Bruce, are you still on? We can't hear Derek.
Yeah, I I we're in different locations, so I can't account for it. I apologize.
While we're waiting, can I ask a city question?
Sure. I can see Derek's trying to speak, but I don't know why he's muted.
Ask a question. These these images that you went up on the screen, we haven't seen this.
They were sent late, and they were forwarded to everybody yesterday. The mayor, Larry, sent them. But they were sent late.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Derek Hanson, and I am the owner and operator of REA Senior Living. And we are a premier small group living environment that really is based on evidence-based beliefs and research showing that these small group homes really does improve a lot with the residents' satisfaction, staff retention, mobility, fall reduction. There's a lot of different things that are impacted in our small group living model. So even though we have what would be 26 rooms, it's divided into the upstairs and downstairs. So it's really, in effect, two separate areas. And we serve seniors with that are handicapped and disabled, maybe physically or mentally impaired. You know, maybe it's walking, seeing, hearing, or maybe a personal care. So our whole purpose is to accommodate those seniors with disabilities and reasonable accommodations that we request. You know, through this are made on behalf of any future individuals with disabilities who, you know, in the future will be living with us. And so we're not just your typical assisted living. It's it's quite a bit different as far as its structure, the home environment. And we're actually, it's it's 26 units with a capacity of about 32 residents in our on our home that we're looking to do. And, you know, for us, our home, we feel this home will be good for the community. It won't really actually will reduce any transportation burdens for people in the local area. And finances are lower, too, for assisted living due to our competitive pricing that we're able to do. It's going to provide some tax revenue for the community and no load on the school system. We're regulated by the state. And I think that any issues are significantly outweighed by the pressing need for handicapped housing. And more options for seniors will really only lower the cost for senior care. And we're a great place for for seniors with disabilities. We'll provide a nice, safe environment. So that's that's it. We're just asking for reasonable accommodations to any rules, policies, or practices to help us serve those that we do.
Okay, thank you. And you. Mr. There's any questions?
Mr. Chairman, a question. I think this would be answered by the administration, but one of the items on on the staff report was that the change of zoning from OV to B2 was was maybe problematic. And I think that the applicant sort of addressed. Could you kind of elaborate on that slightly, what this sunset provision might be if we put that in as a condition?
This is Bruce Rinker. I can speak to it generally. I would look to legal counsel to make sure it's it's protecting you, but I've I've done this in a couple of other locations, even with referendum voting, where in effect, what we say is, if you approve the rezoning, you expect it to be completed within a certain period of time. Typically, that's going to track what your code normally would look to for a building period. If you consider conditional use permits, there's usually a period of anywhere from one year to two years, six months to 18 months. I mean, I have not looked at your code in that regard, but I think that we would be very flexible in terms of looking at a realistic timetable from soup to nuts to get get it in the ground and get it to a point where occupancy permits would be issued. That if that were not to materialize, then you have a provision in there in which the city could say, all right, if we can't work out whatever delay has been brought us to this point, this goes away. So it's a self-executing mechanism. So I don't know if I'm explaining it sufficiently for you. Maybe the devil's going to be in the details in the document. Basically, though, it gives the city the ability to determine the timeframe and the outcome.
Mr. Zeeman, any comment?
I'm not going to comment on it. It's premature to do that. I do think that, you know, in terms of the formal submission, it is currently zoned RVG. Some some Old Village, I'm sorry. Yeah, the all the prior discussion still RVG into my mind. I think it is material, and my my recommendation to the commission is to, you know, maybe get a little bit more information from the property owner as to why the the village development plan that's been approved is is not moving forward. The extent the owner can share that information, I think maybe that will inform the the commission and ultimately city council with respect to the viability of the current Old Village classification and the approved development plan, and whether or not rezoning this from something other than OV would be would be appropriate.
And I do believe Jeff is on the line, if I'm not mistaken, who is the property owner.
Well, this isn't informal tonight, so he may not be prepared to or willing to share all that information. So I would just suggest that maybe something that would be relevant for for the final. No decision can be made tonight since it is informal.
It's Jeff Kami. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I just to echo really Bruce and Derek. REA has this this sort of program down to a science. Just from my my perspective, the the aesthetics of their other projects, you know, this this project would be in line with the historical classic theme of the area. I think it's it would be great for the surrounding businesses. And it's from, you know, my layman's perspective, it's it's a combination, sort of a hybrid of residential and commercial. And really, you know, aesthetically, it's it's an improvement over, from my perspective, what I was working towards, which really just, at the end of the day, didn't pencil out. And you know, I was having difficulty getting that off the ground. But this seemed like a perfect solution. But I I understand this is an informal review, so if if more details needed, I can provide that.
Mr. Cook.
I mean, for me, it's hard to get over the fact that it was rezoned by the voters to OV, to have a residential and commercial component. And it's an end run around getting the property to B2. So it's hard, no matter what the project is, no matter how beautiful the building is, so on and so forth, it's people went out and voted it a certain way. For me, I don't feel comfortable then taking it from OV to B2 without it going back to reference, because that's not what the people voted for.
If I may, this is Bruce Rinker, and and while I understand that, I think there are always two parts to the rezoning in any community. Majorly, in Metter, for the OV, it's it's unique, where every particular development plan is put to the voters. The zoning district for OV treats this proposal as a conditional use. So it's not saying you can't have it. It's saying you can have it on condition. The distinction, though, in Metter is that with the OV district, you add that extra step of going to the voters. So while we appreciate that that popular consensus is baked into the zoning classification, if you set aside for the moment this specific development plan, you still have, under the code for OV, a conditional use component. And I would frankly be more than happy to discuss further looking at the criteria for conditional use that's set forth in the chapter. As often is the case with conditional use permits, there's a fair amount of subjectivity. But in a nutshell, additional use permits look to impacts. They look to adverse impacts. And I think by any objective measure, this is a proposal that has no adverse impact to the adjacent properties, not from traffic. It's a very modest traffic impact. Design components are very integral to the OV district. Virtually, the entire chapter deals with it as historic preservation for certificates of appropriateness and all of those procedures. This isn't sidestepping those procedures. The salient difference is that the specific site plan is not being voted upon by the voters, but instead, it's being handled as is typically administratively between the planning commission, which has the experience to bring to bear, and the council as well. So we're not trying to sidestep anything, but candidly, we're trying to move this in a quicker fashion. But we think that the city, through its officials, should be able to challenge this development to meet the standards that you would expect for the OV. But the B2 zoning treats this as permitted. So whether it's treated as permitted or conditionally, we think that we meet those criteria objectively. This is much more about the procedure. And the process, as I indicated before, can be handled in a way that gives you far more control than not.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
I I do have some of the same.
I, I do have some of the same concerns about the intentions of the voters when this was first, uh, decided, but my view is a little different. And that was the fact that I think they anticipated, in fact, I know they anticipated, that this was going to be part of a, a city center. That this was a, and, and, um, so much of this project hasn't really reached a level of success that everyone had intended, I think, in my opinion. But this is the last missing tooth in this project. And it's really being, and the suggestion that this project meets the desire of the voters and of the city to create a city center, a village center environment. I don't feel strongly this project does that. I, it's, it's a great project, uh, but by its very nature of the design, you could pick this up and put it almost on any piece of property anywhere and make it successful. My concern is that this is a specific piece of property that has expectations about it as a part of an old village city center. And I don't think anything about the project actually addresses that expectation.
If I may, this is Bruce again, and I'll let Derek speak to it. And, and these are all points that we, we understand because the expectations that are really tracked historically, this, this appears to be a departure. So we don't expect you to embrace it immediately. Derek can tell you that in both Gates Mills and in Mayfield Heights, the initial, uh, response was one of apprehension. And candidly, I, I, I think in a lot of communities, that idea of a group home, uh, something that's different from a conventional single family or some other residential use, it's met with, um, pushback. But bear in mind, this is serving, uh, a part of the community. We're all getting older and these are uses that are very, very, um, necessary. And if you think about it, when you have a mix of uses and you're including your oldest part of your population that has, and you can create it in this kind of setting, um, it would seem to me that it's appropriate to look at that as compatible with the other mixes. To say it's a town center where you've got some kind of a magnet, uh, I get that, I think that's something different. But I'll turn this to Derek because I think Derek can speak better to why this site, as opposed to saying you could move it anywhere, I think there are logistical aspects of this site that he finds to be strategic.
Well, I mean, before, before you get, get into this, again, I think you even alluded to the fact that this was, it was an expectation that this site would generate commercial and city center kind of vibe, combining contemporary or, you know, or, or appropriate housing and commercial as a combined use.
Right.
Uh, this, this use, I, I have no problem with the use and we have multiple projects like this in the city in different locations. My concern is that this does not actually generate any commercial activity or, or, or usage of the adjacent commercial activities. I mean, these folks are basically internal to this site. You don't go wandering around and, and shopping and, and using other locations. I'm not, I'm not criticizing it, I'm not, I think it's absolutely necessary, but like I said, this, and even as a building, this building is, looks like it could, could have been designed for any site, not necessarily looks like it's been designed for the main street, one of the two main streets in the city of Mener, addressing the adjacencies and the historical school next door. And it just, it just seems to be, uh, you know, an island.
If I may, oh, sorry.
Okay, I was gonna say, but I feel it doesn't seem to, to address the original voter interest in an OV zoning and projects that would.
I, I would ask two things to that and, and take it in reverse order. The second one, from a design standpoint, um, if you get past the use, the design component is definitely a work in progress. Those are criteria, those factors that look, I would submit can be achieved, both from materials, the facade, from a design element, those can be addressed. Just the fact that this particular, um, rendering doesn't meet those, uh, I wish it did, but I'm not suggesting that it can't be changed. I, I would think that that would be one of the more, uh, flexible components of the proposal. So just please keep that in mind from a design standpoint. We're at an informal stage and that's one of the reasons we want this, so we can go back to the drawing board literally. The first point though that you make, and all I can return to is, sure, people get perceptions because they saw specific renderings and they voted on them. And, and that, that's part of that OV procedure. But by an objective measure, the OV district treats this as a conditional use. So I think the better question I have is, is it not appropriate to judge this, not on those expectations, but on what the criteria are for a conditional use in the district? And that's why we think we would be able to meet those criteria. From a procedural standpoint, having a rezoning to B2 works better for the project to move forward. But in terms of the land use that the code connotates, this would be, I think you could look at it as if it were a conditional use permit. Which is a separate issue, I think, from those expectations.
So why not just ask for a conditional use permit and not a full rezone?
Well, my understanding is that once you go through the full process with the planning commission and the council, then it gets put out to the electorate. And that timetable may be in time for November, it's more likely going to be next year. And that's a decision that for my client, um, that creates a real problem in being able to get the project done. And that's why we've made the request. And Derek, if I'm misstating that, correct me, but I think it, it really is a practical decision. And candidly, B2 along Center Street in that area, from a, from a land use standpoint, certainly seems appropriate. I think it's more the practical issue of random vote versus what you can accomplish administratively.
Okay, thank you.
If it had to go back to a vote, that's the issue. Um, and that was the whole point of, um, you know, doing a rezone. Now, that was it. If it didn't have to go back for a revote, then I don't see why there would be a need. I can tell you that the house will be beautiful. I mean, the houses we've built are beautiful. It'll be a modern farmhouse look, there'll be plenty of brick in it. And it'll be very nice. I mean, it'll be, uh, look like a high-end home, you know, and it'll be a nice. And, you know, I guess the whole main point is that I'm just asking for you guys to make any reasonable accommodations to your rules, policies, um, so that we can help accommodate these people. And, you know, a city center, as far as a city center goes, I know it was going to have a, it sounds like some shops or whatnot. You know, I mean, do you want me to build a beauty shop on, on the bottom floor of one of the spots? I mean, then we can have a little beauty shop or something. I mean, the thing is, is seniors like to live in a, in a city center. And then also, I wonder about like the rest of the area. I mean, our houses that we plan on building is going to be really beautiful. And I mean, if I look across the street from where I'm at, it's not so beautiful. And, you know, so I, I just know that it's, it'll be nice and we're just asking for reasonable accommodations.
It's Jeff Kami again. I'll just add, the, the previous plan was residential units with one commercial unit. So.
How large was the commercial unit?
It was 2,000 square feet, if I remember correctly, in front of me, but it was, it was one, it was one commercial unit on the corner. I can show you Derek at some point, but.
Yeah, that's great.
Wasn't like there were four retail shops and a restaurant. It, it wasn't an elaborate city center you might, uh, you know, imagine.
Right. Yeah.
And, and let me, let me speak to just my expectation of that project. I thought that was an excellent project, the previous one, is that the, the street was, the street edge was defined and it, and it was, it accommodated a series of professional offices on the first floor of residential property. So in addition to the retail or the commercial, it also had professional offices and, and residential. So it was an interesting project. It worked.
Live work.
It live work. Which fits into the city center kind of concept.
What, the offices, um, they were just offices that people rented out or they put in a farm rental?
Live work, people, individual professionals could live in, in a three-story townhouse and have their professional offices off the main street on the first floor. No rentals. But it created that nuance.
Sounds like a lot of traffic, I mean, but.
Oh, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Isn't this just an informal?
Yes.
Okay, well, the recommend, I mean, my recommendation would just be that this project should try to emulate the desire of the voters. I'm not saying that it's inappropriate, I'm just saying it doesn't emulate what expectations about the project.
Yeah, I would say either that or you go the, uh, the route where it goes back to the voters.
I'm going to have to echo what, uh, Mr. Cook said earlier. This just sounds like an end run around the electorate.
Or it stays an orphaned lot. I mean, that's the other option, right?
Earlier you said, uh, it looked nice across the street. I was wondering if you could clarify what you meant by that.
Well, I look across the street and I see, um, lots that are, from what I heard, were unsellable because there used to be a dry cleaner under them and that, that lot across the street is for sale, from what I understand. So, you know, what I am.
It had too many environmental hazards.
So, I mean, yeah, it looks, what I'm building looks of like a thousand times better than that. You know, I mean, that's, like I said, I think that, I mean, you were looking at building condos, um, right there, um, and I would hope that, um, you know, seniors could live in that area. It's, you know, I know you, you know, it'll be a nice building. But we're just looking to, or we think we're most like some of the, um, that B2, but if it's OV, you know, but, um, you know, the whole vote part is the issue, you know?
Mr. Zeeman, question. If it comes back as a CUP under the OV zoning, it doesn't go to referendum, right?
There's a, not that simple. Um, the development plan would have to be in substantial agreement with what was approved. Whether or not they can, they can design a project, um, which would allow for this use, um, maybe some other compatible commercial uses, um, and, and still be in accordance with the, the approved development plan. Obviously, I'm not a developer architect, so I can't answer that question. But, um, if it were in substantial agreement, it's something that the commission could approve.
So let me ask this question, can you come back with something that you're palatable?
You mean that we have retail?
Maybe.
That just seems like an odd pairing, um, retail below and then seniors above.
Well, maybe, maybe you can't do it then. It's just a thought.
So, I mean, if you guys can't do reasonable accommodations, then yeah, just let me know and then that's how we'll, we'll, we'll proceed.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, may I? I, I don't know what this, this is about, this is an informal. Um, you keep, I, I've heard this something multiple times about reasonable accommodations. Maybe this is a discussion that myself and your legal counsel should have.
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I do have another question though, um, to go back from a design standpoint, do I hear correctly that the elevation that's provided is not the look that you envisioned collectively?
No, I only, I, I, let me speak to that initially. I, I, I just saw it in the middle of.
No, I understand.
I hadn't seen it before. And all I was, my, my reaction was that it looks like an apartment building or some type of generic office building, symmetric and could be located anywhere. And, and this is a specific site that had desires or expectations. And, um, I, my personal opinion was, you know, I, I was looking for something more unique to this location, this site, this, these expectations.
Thank you, thanks.
Other questions, comments?
Real quick, um, so if there were what, a couple of retail spaces of like an ice cream shop and a beauty salon, is that, that's kind of along those lines?
Mr. Chairman. As an informal, you know, the commission's really not allowed to make any decisions. And I think maybe it's kind of getting a little bit murky in that regard.
We're just asking for feedback.
Correct, and that's what the commission's to provide, but it sounds like you're, you know, just, just be careful to remind the commission that tonight is not the, the point to, to, um, make any decisions relative to the merits, uh, of any, of any formal rezoning that may be submitted by the applicant.
Well, with all due respect, we're not asking for decisions, what we're asking for is some guidance.
Well, I, I think that what I'm hearing is you're asking for what, what would be acceptable. And what I'm hearing, and that's where I think it's probably getting a little bit beyond the scope of an informal review.
Well, again, not, not trying to get into a disputation. I, I think we all kind of recognize that this is not something that's substantially similar to what was approved before. It's a departure. I, I think the harder question to answer though is, if it's a departure, what is something that still fits within the realm of the purpose and intent of the OV district? From that standpoint, and no, we're, we're not asking for you to weigh in and make a decision on that, but I think it's, it's fair to ask, if you look at the mix of uses, and this seems to be too much of a singular, singular use, is it, I can be professional offices where people live in there. Obviously, that presentation is not what this is. Something that's different, has a mix or can meet that mix, I think that's all Mr. Hanson's trying to get some handle on. If, if he's going to mix in other uses within this building, what seems to make sense?
Like things that work for seniors, like.
We're putting you on the spot, yeah.
My recommendation would be to work with the administration on, on those issues. You know, the planning commission, I don't, the planning commission has to react to what's in front of it. So generally, the administration is your first point of contact relative to.
Fair enough.
Some of those issues.
Fair enough, and we definitely will do that. No, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
New business, final site plan of an office building at 8160 Northern Parkway. Sorry, is that applicant down there?
Yes, they are. I'm gonna call them up right now. Okay, Tom is here. And. Tom, can you hear us? This is for the Northern Parkway. Tom, can you hear us?
Correct.
He probably went to sleep.
What are those people talking about?
Tom, Mark?
Anyone?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mark.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
We seem to have lost Tom.
Well, maybe we could start with Mark. Larry, is Mark available?
Mark is there and so is Tom. They're both there, so either one can speak, I miss.
Anybody at all?
Well, I do need Tom to lead it off.
Tom, are you there? Larry, where's Tom?
He's there and I, oh, he's here, he's, he cannot unmute. Tom, you should be unmuted. You're unmuted on my screen.
He's on his phone.
Tell him to go into his, if, if he can hear us, go into your settings on your phone. I've had this problem too. In the Webex app, if you go into the settings, you can adjust the speaker.
Sure. Item seven is tabled. I entertain a motion to table it.
Motion to table.
Second.
Mr. Cicero. Mr. Cicero?
He's there.
Mr. Cicero. Mr. Cicero?
Let's move on.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
And is Mr. Cicero back?
No, he doesn't have to vote.
No vote, that's okay.
How are we doing with, uh, Norton Parkway?
I think he's still trying to figure out the phone.
Okay, well, we'll move on.
Can you hear us, Tom? Would you like to go to number eight then? And we'll come back.
Yeah, I think we'll go to number eight.
Okay.
Site plan and architecture review of an industrial building at 6989 Lindsay Drive. How we doing, Larry?
We, I put Rich through. I'm not sure who else.
The, Rahim, is he on?
He's there, let me make him a panelist. Rahim is now part of it, and so is Rich. There, I unmuted Rich.
I'm back, I couldn't hear you guys for a while.
That's okay, we, no vote.
No vote.
Okay, we've got Ri, we've got the, we've got Rich and Rahim. Can you guys hear us?
I can not.
Rich?
In the kitchen, we're eating.
Let's go back to number six.
Uh, he was logging back in. I think he left and was trying to get back in.
Okay.
Can Rahim hear us?
Okay, let's move on to number nine. Miscellaneous review for the expansion of a garden center at 8,000 Plaza Boulevard by
Okay, let me call them up. Okay. AJ, can you hear us?
Yep. Hi, guys.
Winter chicken dinner.
So tell us what you want to do with that location, A your location.
So, um, we spoke with Shop One, who's the property owner, and with, um, At Home entering, um, that plaza pretty much right exterior to us, we're a little bit concerned with, with the added competition on the interior parts of the store. So they've allowed us, um, as long as it's okay with the council, um, to expand into the parking lot area to increase the outdoor area, um, of the, the retail space. So basically, the, the plant areas, um, compared to our other stores, it's a really tight footprint. And in the spot that we're in, um, there was a former movie theater there, there's an abundance of parking, so, you know, for us to push out in that, uh, area, you can kind of see what we're looking at with the yellow lines, and then where the blue lines are, um, would be a solid fence. Um, it's on the next page of the proposal. Um, the yellow lines would be basically an extension of the existing, uh, brick and fencing that we have.
Okay, Kathy, comments from the administration?
Our main concern at this point, we are, are comfortable with the request. Uh, the only recommendation that the administration would like to see is that the, the screening wall is consistent on both sides. In particular, the current screening wall of the existing area is a combination of stone pillars and iron fencing, which we like, it's very attractive looking. And on the live plant socks, uh, the live plant stocks side, uh, they are proposing that, but they are proposing a vinyl fence on the side facing, uh, 84, and we'd like that to be consistent. However, the side facing 84 is, is intended for, um, bulked material storage, so we would recommend that that wall be adjusted slightly, in terms of the base wall be higher up to conceal more of that bulked storage, again, but using a combination of, uh, stone and the, um, iron, uh, pillars.
We'd be happy to. How high would you like to see that wall?
Well, we made a recommendation of, of, uh, well, I think, isn't, isn't the, uh, the, the wall on, on the side with the live plant stock, isn't it eight feet?
Uh, that's the full, yeah, that's the full, um, the full height of the pillars, without any iron on it.
So, uh, one recommendation would be to have a, a five-foot masonry wall and then three-foot decorative metal fencing above.
And with piers?
Okay.
With piers, with piers, just like you're showing in your.
So does that sound like something you could do?
Absolutely.
Kathy, does that satisfy the administration?
Just as long as he can, he can, he's comfortable with all the conditions, we're, we're fine.
Well, that's another condition, right?
Oh, it's in there.
It's already number two. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right, it's already.
So, Mr. Petiti, so, uh, you read the staff report, you're familiar with all the conditions that exist?
Uh, I did, but what other conditions are there? Just, just so we're both clear.
Kathy, you want to cover those?
May I read them?
Sure.
Hey, uh, condition number one, comments per the city engineer and fire department shall be addressed as part of any building permit application, specifically the following. Means of egress system from the garden area with conforming gates and hardware shall be provided, clearly indicate how parking lot access will be modified. Drive aisles shall accommodate truck traffic as appropriate, indicate how closed access aisles will be modified at points of closure. Uh, drive aisle, we should meet minimum standards per the banner code of ordinances. And the aisle south of the loading zone may be too narrow for two-way traffic, but we just want to make sure that that's clarified at the time of building permit submission. Um, and then the fire department noted that, um, this was a previous, uh, requirement of theirs that only non-combustible or, or limited combustible materials or products under the shade area, um, as was required when installed. Uh, this is, this is a S2 use group without sprinkler protection, so that's why they're emphasizing that requirement. And then the second item actually pertains to, again, the fencing that we just talked about, and then the screening, the height of the screen wall shall be one foot more than the height of the material to be screened. Those are all outlined in the report.
Does that sound like something you could live with?
Yeah, yeah, not a problem.
Okay, good.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Second.
Mr. Cicero? Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go back to number six.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try number six again. I just brought Rahim over. I see I have Rich here again. Try this, Rich.
That would be item eight.
Um, I would, yeah, number eight, I'm sorry.
Available.
The point of order, if we can't communicate with these folks, we just table them?
And I think I've got Rich and Rahim on. Kim Reamer indicated they were on, I've got four callers calling in as caller, call-in user numbers. I don't have a number for them.
Well, let's, let's forget that one for the moment.
Looks like Rich is muted.
Uh, I, oh.
There he goes.
Okay, he's unmuted. Can you hear us, Rich? Try this one. Rich, can you hear us?
Quarter to ten.
Rahim, can you hear us?
Table.
Okay, it's.
Real close.
Is the owner on? Is, is Michael Canty on?
They say they are, I just don't know which call-in user they are. I can unmute them all and we can see who answers.
Let's do that. We'll do a roll call.
Hello?
Hello? Yes, and you are?
This is Michael Canty, I'm the owner.
Okay, first try.
Number eight.
Great.
Okay, so we got Michael Canty.
Mr. Chairman, would you like him to go ahead?
As long as he can do the whole presentation.
I think so. And hopefully we get the other ones on board, but, um, uh, thank you for, for hearing this tonight. Um, I am the owner of a company called Alloy Bellows, and we own, uh, a subsidiary called Star Precision Technologies. Can you still hear me?
Yes, yes.
Hello? Okay.
Hi, Michael.
Okay, thank you. So Star Precision is on Lindsay Drive. It's right off of, um, Center Street or 615, and it's on the corner. And we have four lots there, uh, the current improvement's about forty-seven hundred square feet, and a manufacturing company occupy all the parts of three of four of those lots. The fourth lot is currently wooded and it's adjacent to a parking lot where we, uh, receive freight and shipments and things like that. It's about 1.1, 1.2 acres, and we're proposing building a twenty-two thousand five hundred square foot building, uh, for expansion, and the movement of our, uh, headquarters and manufacturing operations in Highland Heights to Mentor would be bringing in about, um, three million, a little over three million additional payroll, and in round numbers, about, uh, fifty, fifty-five or so jobs coming in.
So I understand the bone of contention is how much metal we're gonna put in the building. Is that correct?
Well, um, yes, the, the, um, there are four, obviously four sides to this, um, of the building. The side facing Lindsay Drive, which is the cul-de-sac side of it, would be all brick. I mean, we prefer less, but that is obviously a big cost, but it would be all brick with windows, that'd be the side where our headquarters are on. The side facing, um, um, how do you, should I give my directions correct here?
Facing south.
Facing south towards, yeah, on that side, that's where our headquarter entrance would be, and, uh, we'd fill up the rest of that entire lot. And then facing, um, the plant, which is the other three lots, um, that is really, um, adjacent and budding up to our, uh, large, um, delivery, shipping lot, uh, that we put a brand new one in here about, uh, four years, three, four years ago. And, uh, that would have mostly metal and, uh, the, uh, brick would go up about four feet, have two, um, large overhead doors for receiving, uh, and shipping product and freight, and there'd be about six or eight pass, uh, walk-through doors on the various sides of this building. The side facing, uh, 615, there's a bridge there, so that bridge is about the same height of this building, maybe a little taller, and, um, we, uh, there's, uh, I don't know how many, many feet there is between the end of the building and that kind of bridge, but, uh, be very difficult to even see that inside the building. We'll have trees there, which currently exist, and that would be the end of the building, um, going in. So we would have brick and, and metal on, um, three sides. Uh, on the one side by Lindsay Drive, on the west side, it would be all brick. Uh, again, we'd love to have just some metal on it because of cost, but we'd do all brick. There would be no brick on the one side that faces 615, um, but no one's gonna see that. It will be structurally sound and very attractive building, and, uh, you know, that's gonna be our headquarters, so they're moving from Highland Heights, so.
So Kathy, what's, what's the concern of the administration?
We were just, uh, reiterating what was in the design guidelines for the industrial quarter, which recommends the use of masonry as the dominant material. If metal panels are used, they should not be used on the office portion of a building or the main facade facing a street. If metal panels are used on the side or rear of a building, they should occupy 50% of the wall, and should be located above a brick base. So, we're, again, the administration is pointing out those items. Now, you know, the, the north side of the building, as I understand it, is, uh, to be a loading area. I don't know that it's necessary to have as much brick on that side, but, um.
They're on the phone, they're not.
We wanted to point out those points, but what's in the design guideline.
Hey, thank you.
City of Menor people, Matt.
Hello.
Any questions?
Uh, I'm trying to summarize it down to what would be a reasonable request. Uh, is it possible to, on the side facing the bridge, continue the same elevation treatment that you have on most of the south elevation? Just to have a brick, a, a masonry band that wraps around on the, on. that wraps around on the, on the...
Anything is possible, uh, it just adds cost.
Right, I understand that.
Hello?
But though it may not seem like an important, uh, elevation, it faces one of the most trafficked roads in the city. Everyone gets a chance to look at your building from the bridge. So I would suggest that... So I would suggest that we add brick to the east elevation, uh, though we don't see it here, but, and, and not worry about the north elevation, because that's the parking lot, truck, truck side? I'm, that's a question to the rest of my commissioners there.
You can't even see it.
Hold on, folks. We've got a couple people talking. If you could indicate your name before you speak and realize that you are on air. Sorry.
Uh, hello, this is Fahim. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello?
Hello?
You hope.
We... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, that's why we, we, when we designed the west side of the elevation, we thought that Lindsay Drive is the most important one, so we put the brick there, so we can flip-flop it and design, uh, Lindsay Drive, which is nobody's going to see anyway, other than the people who come into their offices, and, and, and switch the west side to the east side, and the east side to the west side. And, and keep the return of the ten-feet breadth on, on, on the north as well as on the east, where the entrance of the headquarters is going to be.
You can't just add a four-foot strip of masonry to the base on the east side. Can you do that? Won't do that?
We have already four, we do have four foot already shown of masonry on the east side. It does show...
Okay, well, we don't... All right, okay, we don't, we don't see the east side on your drawings that you submitted.
Yes, you did.
That's what you think if you do... Okay, there we go. Okay, fine, never mind. That, that's good. That's good. I didn't see that before.
Okay, that's what we have. We have four foot of masonry on the east side already to match the rest of the building.
That's fine, that's fine. So I don't have, I have no more comment.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
What?
Colors?
Oh, yeah, I know. I learned every time he told me.
Do we have samples? Colors?
Well, it's going to be, uh...
It's, it's like this, right? If it's like that, that'll be fine.
Exactly.
You're going to have to hold them, what they show here.
Do the colors match the existing building adjacent?
No, uh, it's going to be cleaner, better, newer, and, uh, it's going to be looking sharp building.
Kathy? If, if these are the colors, this is what we're holding them to.
Sure, we have no problem with the color.
Hey, what's the pleasure of the commission?
Uh, rooftop? Have rooftop units on this?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Where's the mechanical units? Anything on the roof?
Uh, we're not sure about, it doesn't look like we're going to put, it's going to be a pitched roof, so it's going to be on the side. We haven't designed yet, but, uh, for sure, it's not going to be on the roof.
Okay, well, even if it's on the ground, you got to put, you got to shield it to some degree. Of course, we don't know what it looks like. I can't tell you how much.
We, we, uh, we will have to modify it with that if we have to, when the final design comes.
Kathy, this is listed as final design.
Well, it, it would have to comply with the standards, which we would review at the time of building permit review.
Just as long as we're on the same page. All right, well then, let's see, how many conditions are there?
Uh, there are five.
All right, so I suggest I move for approval with the five conditions.
Second.
Second.
Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Kathy, you were shaking your head no.
I don't know.
Hey.
As long as, as long as it looks like the picture.
We're, we're back to number six.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Excellent.
That Tom Deedee?
Yes, ma'am. Kathy?
Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Go ahead. If you're ready to go, go ahead. You're not ready to go, go ahead anyway.
This is, uh, Tom Deedee with AODK Architects. I'm one of the architects working on the projects. Um, this is, uh, submitted for a final site development plan approval. Um, it's a, it's a three-story office building. Um, it's a, um, if this is Norton Parkway, um, there's a, a ring road around the building, uh, with parking, and there's a buffer around the parking as well as adjacent to the building. Part of the, the planning commission comments, uh, last, last time, one of the comments was provide a buffer to the south with some vermes, which we've incorporated into the, uh, the project here in the landscape plan you can see. And we, uh, we reviewed the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, city planners report and the conditions associated with it, and I think they're relatively straightforward.
So how do you reconcile the color of the garage?
So we're, we're, we're looking at a couple, a couple of different buildings with, a couple of different options with a color scheme of the building and the garage. And we agree with you that the garage is a little bit vanilla, and I, I think what we want to do is bring some of the, some of the banding and accents that, that are consistent with the other, uh, parts of the building. Um, I think for one is the contrast with the garage doors, um, needs to be looked at, and I think there, there's kind of a nice clean, uh, band running around, um, the, uh, the main face of the building, incorporating that into the patio and the, the top of the garage, I think makes some sense.
Okay. Kathy, does that satisfy you?
As long as the commission is comfortable with those statements, but you, if you probably want to be specific with what, what we're looking for.
Let me, uh, let me make a suggestion. Uh, garage doors. I think you did hit on the garage doors.
Yes, sir.
You've got the coloration and the, the wood towers, the wood, wood look towers?
Mm-hmm.
Do you consider making the garage doors, uh, match that? That would certainly...
That's certainly something, uh, we, we could consider looking at, kind of incorporating some of that, some of that, uh, natural tone into the garage doors.
Would you accept it as a condition?
What, what we'd like to do is, is go back and, and look at the elevations with, uh, the, the clients. I, I think there, there, there are some tweaks and, 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 uh, modifications that are still coming. So what, what I'd like to do is, uh, is, um, take another run at that, make sure we're all on the same page, and then, and then run it back to planning commission.
Okay, well then I would suggest we table this so that you can come back with that, those recommendations. I make a motion to table?
Second.
Cicero? Cicero?
Yes.
Hey, in, I have a question. In, in terms of keeping the, the project moving and getting permits going for, for the site work and foundation work, is that going to hold us up from, uh, from getting that process moving forward?
Site plan will be separate from the architectural.
Yeah, the, the site and the foundation will be separate packages.
Then do we want to vote on the site plan? We'll vote on the site plan.
For the architectural approval.
Right.
Motion to table being...
The, the motion to table is withdrawn.
Second.
Second is...
So, that won't hold you up, uh, well, it...
There's, and there's no issues with the site plan. So then I'll make a motion to approve the site plan.
Second.
Mr. Cicero?
George, Dave.
Mr. Cicero? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich? Mr. Teedeman? Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
All right.
Mr. Varga?
Yes. Yes. We're going to table the architectural review, right?
Going to table the architectural review. Is that a separate motion? Can I make a motion that we table the architectural review?
Second.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Reenan?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Teedeman?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
I have nothing.
We're on the agenda. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Good night, everybody.